Would you like to call meeting in order if you'd stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, thank you and welcome everyone. Welcome everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee Gatt.
Present.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Recker.
Present.
Trustee Carter.
Okay, thank you. Now we would be at Item 4, Approval of the Board of Trustees Minutes for Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. And I would also ask we approve, it's all right, Council, both sets of these minutes at once?
That's fine.
So it also asks for approval of the Special Board of Trustees Minutes for Thursday, December 13th, 2018 as well. So could I get a motion to approve both those sets of minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or corrections? Okay, all those in favor of approving both of those sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item 6 is correspondence. Any correspondence tonight? Madam Clerk?
Yes. I have a letter here from Sharon and John Andal, and it reads, "As 2018 draws to a close, we pause to marvel at the amazing transformation happening in the Heights." Yes, of course, many other people have been a part of this, but without leadership, great accomplishments. Um, hold on here. Oh, they simply don't happen. Sorry about that. Peoria Heights is well on its way to being a destination, and we look forward to watching it grow and thrive. Thank you. Sharon and John Andal.
Okay, anything else?
That'll be all.
All right, we would be at announcements. Some of us did attend the Duryea Apartments' grand opening last week. There were a lot of people that filtered through there. The apartments look great, and I think they're well on their way to being fully leased out. So if you haven't seen those, please take a look. It's a great addition to Peoria Heights. Earlier tonight, I was down at Hearth. Hearth is celebrating its fifth year in business this year, and also they just did a remodel of their front part of their restaurant. So Hugh Higgins is a great asset to the community, very active in the Chamber of Commerce and things in Peoria Heights. Thank you, if you see him, thank him for his investment in Hearth and his additional investment in his remodel. And finally, tonight, I would like to call out for special recognition of our Public Works crew who did an outstanding job on managing this big snowstorm we had over the weekend. I don't know about the rest of you, but I was out, had to drive in the region and some other of our sister cities, and you certainly can tell when you enter Peoria Heights. Terrific job, and I know Saturday afternoon that it was snowing so hard, they were really up against the wall, but again, thanks to all the Public Works people for their fine efforts. Now we would be at committee reports, trustee reports. The first is economic and community development. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor Fallon. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, trustee Carter is absent. Chief Sutton, is there anything you'd like to report on police?
The only thing I have, Mayor, is that I just want to bring attention. We've been receiving an increase of complaints regarding solicitors in the Heights in the last couple of weeks. In fact, some of the visits resulting in residents letting these individuals in their house. You need a permit to solicit in Peoria Heights, so if they don't have a permit and there's any que-- or you have any question about them, just contact the police department. We'll make sure that they have the correct credentials, but please do not let them into your house. We've found quite a few just in the last couple of weeks that weren't even legitimate businesses. So just a heads up to the community, and if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me or any member of the Peoria Heights Police Department.
Should they be openly displaying a permit?
No, it's not something they wear, but they should. They should have something on them, and it's something we run, everything through the police department as far as background checks and make sure they were with legitimate businesses.
If asked, they should have.
Yes, they should.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chief Sutton? Okay, on to building and property maintenance. Trustee Gatt.
I have nothing at this time unless chief.
Trustee Recker, fire.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
And Public Works, trustee Hart.
The only thing I have is I'd like to reiterate what you've already said. The Public Works crew did a great job through that snowstorm. When it snows for that long, it's tough because you have to keep going over the same areas over and over, and they have to focus on the main roads, and then they would break off to the side streets once in a while, but you know, it's just tough. I mean, you have so many people, and they did a great job for the crew we have, and you're absolutely right. I was out in the snowstorm pretty much throughout the whole thing also, and you can tell the difference when you leave the Heights and go into the city. We, I don't know whether we just have more people per mile or something, if you do the math, or are people just do a fantastic job, which they do, but you could just tell the difference. So kudos. Peoria Heights was well taken care of.
Thank you, trustee Hart. Anything else?
Uh, no, not for now.
Any questions for trustee Hart?
I think Superintendent Casey and Mark Feld have an update on some equipment that we've been able to dispose of.
Yeah, welcome Dave. Yeah, I wanted to update you guys. We had the 1995 fire rescue truck that we were selling. We advertised it on a fire truck resource website, and that was sold last week. A gentleman from a non-for-profit disaster relief agency flew here on a one-way ticket from North Carolina, picked it up, paid $10,000 for it, and drove back from North Carolina. So that thing is out of here. We got out of it where we went into, which was $10,000, so.
It was a great business decision, guys. Thank you for your leadership on that.
Yeah, the two old, two and a half ton, a ton and a half dump trucks, plow trucks we had, Peoria Public Schools, I can't say District 150, I'll get in trouble. The Peoria Public Schools purchased those for $16,000, so, and we wasn't getting much through the dealer, so we took that and ran with it, and they bought them, like, had the check to me the next day, so they needed them real bad for their plowing, so.
And what was it the dealer offered us, Mike?
Uh, the dealer only offered us 2,500 each, and 3,500 for the, oh, red, the fire truck, so, nah, that wasn't feasible in my mind, so we went ahead and got, what was it, so $26,000 for the equipment we disposed of, so. It's being put to good use, so.
Thank you, Mike. While you're up here, just, we've been talking about snow. Is there anything you want to comment on as far as?
No, it was just, we did pretty good. Took a little break there Saturday and got re-energized and did some stuff Saturday night, but this weekend's supposed to be another one, the same thing, I guess. Some people say from 12 to 16 inches. I have no idea, but we appreciate people that move their cars off the streets. Makes it a lot easier for us, and the same thing this weekend, if we get people to move their cars and things, and we'll get to you. We plowed all the side streets four times, so we did the side streets and kept the mains open for emergency traffic and all that stuff, so we gotta put the snow somewhere, so.
You plowed every side street four times?
Yes, three times during the event, and then Monday I came in and we did it again, the side streets, so.
I work with someone who lives in another large community, not the city of Peoria, across the river. As of yesterday, a plow had not been down their street.
Wow. And we did the alleys also, so we had everything pretty much done before we left, so we'll see what happens.
Well, you know, please extend all your career.
Oh, I will.
Thanks and appreciation.
No problem.
You can stop the snow dance.
Last is administration and personnel. Trustee Mariscal, Diane.
I guess the only thing I have to mention is the new employee handbook. February 2nd, or I'm sorry, February 5th, we'll have it here, and we'll discuss it if there's any questions, any changes you want to see, anything like that. We'll be doing that on the 5th. On the 12th then, it'll be up for approval, and then on the 26th, they will have an employee training for that.
Just one correction, I gave trustee Mariscal the wrong date. It'll be, February 19th will be the approval, so I'm sorry about that.
No, no problem.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. On to comments from the audience. Mr. Pittman, are you here to?
Yes, please.
Welcome. Yeah, please come forward if you give your name. Anyone who wants to speak tonight, give your name and address, and then go right ahead. Please keep it to five minutes or less.
Thank you. My name's David Pittman. I'm here tonight to request support from the council for use of their social media to advertise an event called Meet the Candidates Night. I live in West Peoria. I'm a campaign manager for a gentleman who's running for the Peoria Park Board Presidency, Robert Johnson. We feel it's very difficult to get our name recognition out during the upcoming campaign. The general election will be April 2nd, so we've devised what I think's a fairly unique idea for both here as well as the community of West Peoria. I'll be making a similar presentation over there. We, both events would be a simple Meet the Candidates Night with the contested races in Village of Peoria Heights as well as West Peoria being featured. There'll be a moderator with a microphone, and through the course of the three-hour event, there'd be several questions that would be asked of each candidate. The questions for the Peoria Park Board, both the president and the central district trustee, would not be the same as the questions for the Village Heights trustee, which as I'm sure most of you know is a contested election. So I'd like to offer that we be able to have a League of Women Voters available as an objective moderator for the event. They've not got back to me yet. We are inviting them to do that. If I was in your shoes, the most important thing would be to make sure that this was strictly objective, totally fair, no unfair prejudice towards or against any particular candidate. If we can have a League of Women Voters, that'll guarantee that. I would ask that you approve this request, that you allow the mayor to finalize the actual procedure that we'll go through. TNT will be the source. We have a donor who's offered to provide free pizza to anyone who walks in the door. It'll be a cash bar, open all day, of course, to the public. So that's kind of the event, you know? We will make it as totally relaxed as possible. The goal is to see 50 people come in the door, get a slice of pizza, meet the candidates, both village trustees as well as the central district, park board candidates as well as the two candidates who are running to become president of the Peoria Park District. There'll be no cost whatsoever to the village. Our request is that you just publicize the event, not that you endorse the candidates, simply help publicize the event. We'll be going to the chamber as well, and we'll be doing an absolutely similar process over in West Peoria, where it'll be a potato bar at Sky Harbor. Do you have any questions, any concerns?
Well, just if I may jump in. So Dave stopped by the office last week to make this request, but I wanted him to come before you, and I think we both agree that the village isn't going to co-sponsor this anyway. You're simply asking us to put it on our social media and website that there will be this Candidates Night. Is that correct?
That is correct. You know, it's a challenging time for our country, and it's difficult to get people to tune in to something as simple as a local election, but I'm preaching to the choir when I say you know how important these local elections can be. If the turnout is 15%, 20%, we get kind of excited. Well, it's each individual voter, so our thought was that a slice of pizza might be enough to get them to at least come meet somebody, and in that conversation, that might be enough for them to come back and actually do the voting, whether it's early voting or on the day of the election. Our tentative time is probably mid-February. At this point, we're not going to compete with the Super Bowl, so it'll probably be after that.
So I guess I'm looking for direction from the board. And we can't take any action items, not on the agenda, but I guess we could get a consensus if folks want to put this on our website or not, so.
Sure. Yeah. Sounds great.
Is the chamber going to do a Meet the Candidates Night? Have they said anything?
Ms. Michaela here.
She's upstairs. I know that she's been talking to the Women League of Voters as well, so I don't know the final answer on that, but I know something's in the works.
Is that a yes?
Oh, there she is.
She just gave a thumbs up. Trustee Recker, so.
So there'd be two of them then? Okay. And you're looking at mid-February?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't have a firm date?
Yeah, I know it'll be a Saturday, and I know it won't be on Super Bowl Sunday.
I'm not hearing any opposition. Is that correct? Okay, so we're simply going to put this notice up on social media. The village is not co-sponsoring, but we're just going to notify our citizens that this event will occur.
Very good.
Will you work with Sarah to let her confirm those dates and times?
It'll be my pleasure.
Okay. Thanks for all you do, David.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Hi, Shirley Fowler, 1130 East Euclid Avenue in Heights. I'm not here to complain, I'm just here to find out what's going on. I still am a little bit unclear about the water billing, because when I got my bill for the new garbage stuff, it was $15, and then someone at the office I called down, and they said it was supposed to be something like 52 every three months, and so, am I getting a discount or anything because of I'm on the homestead exemption? Someone mentioned that.
I believe you are, but I'll refer to Stephanie. Do you know exactly? I know that there are some exemptions, Stephanie, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
Stephanie, will you come up and take a microphone place so everyone at home can hear your answer?
I think, I think I might have actually talked to you at one point. I know we had some problems with your account because most of the accounts were being billed quarterly, not monthly. I believe we've got the issue corrected. If you don't mind, if you would step over with me, I can check on it right now and make sure everything's going okay with it.
Either that or I can call you in the morning.
Well, just come with me.
Well, I got a couple other things to go through.
Okay, you address that.
All right. That's fine, honey. Thank you very much. Because I think she said something about March it might change, so what is the change in March? Is there more going to be added on in March, or?
How it's going to be billed? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
Well, the board next week will have some discussions regarding how they're moving forward on that and how it's going to be billed, so as of right now, I really can't give you an answer, but next week it'll be under discussion and then voted on the first, beginning of February, so.
Okay, that'd be great. I just wanted to know that.
Sure.
And they did do a good job on the roads. I wanted to, what I really like is when they come down the alleys, because my garage opens into the alley, so I never have to worry about getting, I didn't go anywhere down until Monday morning, and the only reason was I had a funeral to go to, so, but it was wonderful to be able to, you know, and one of my neighbors that knows my son did my walks, and it's just great. They do a great job on the roads here, you know? And I saw the new police car, the Charger.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's black.
Yep, it is.
I was just wondering what kind of motor it's got in it. We used to have the 440 Magnum in ours when it was a 68.
Yeah, they can keep up with you.
Yeah, they can. And then, and then also, some of my neighbors have called me and wanted to know if I had rust in my water, and I do, and they do too. So it's right there in the corner of the Heights, right here in Kingman. My neighbor Rose has rust in hers also.
Yeah, I know we did have some issues. We did receive a handful of calls.
We also have some issues.
Hey, Dave, I'm going to ask you, will you take the mic to over here where we, just so everybody at home can hear your answer?
Yeah, we had some issues recently with dirty water. We thought we had them cleared up, and apparently we do not. The issue is, it's complicated because it's not a widespread area. It's a house here and a house there and a house here, which has everybody stumped. Worked on it today, made some more adjustments. I can tell you that it's not a health hazard. We test our, we have strict guidelines we have to follow in the EPA. We test our water daily. It's just displeasing to look at. The adjustments that I made today, hopefully will clear it up. If you flush, if you turn it on and flush it or let it run for a few minutes, it should clear up. Have you tried that? Have you tried to?
I have. It only shows up in certain things though, like your washing machine or.
Okay, that may be something interior you might want to call a plumber about.
I don't know. That's what my neighbor said too.
Yeah, if it's only, if it's only a certain fixture, then it could be, it could be that individual fixture that could be causing the issue. You might want to call a plumber. But we have, we have had some, some problems that we were trying to.
It's in the 1100 block of Kingman and the 1100 block.
Yep, I know where you're at.
That's where it is, so, okay.
Okay, so yeah, as far as the dirty water complaints, we are, we're still getting them here and there, and we are working on it, so hopefully, but like I said, it is not a health hazard. It's just displeasing to look at and.
What kind, where did it come from?
It's dirt and, or brown dirty, it's just dirt in the system, yeah, that we're trying to.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And then, one of my neighbors pushes her mother in a wheelchair to different places, the library and up to the Heights, but she's finding the sidewalks are really bad to push the wheelchair over, because some of them don't have the ramps, I guess, and then some of them are just cracked, so that might be something. She tried to go to the Heights one day to go to the store, and then she's tried to go to the library with her, so I don't know, you know, if there's certain ones, but some of them are so bad you can't push the wheelchair over it, she said. So I wanted to get that in about the sidewalks too, because that could be important to anybody that comes to the Heights to walk or, you know, whatever. So just to bring that up, that some of them are crumbling.
Right.
Also, I had heard a long time ago that they were going to tear down the gray concrete building for the water tower. Is there anything coming up new about all that or not?
Yeah, actually, we're going to have a presentation in a few minutes, so I encourage you to stay, and you'll see what's going to be, what we're proposing to do.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mike, would you answer that question about sidewalks? I know we have some issues, but we hope to address those in the future on the accessibility of the.
Yeah, I've been taking some assessment of bad up to the good sidewalks, so we're going to try to budget some money to fix those, and I can look at that area again, but there's a few. I've been, you know, driving around assessing the different sidewalks, so, but it takes money, so I'm just, I'm going to try to get a, compile a list of, you know, get the program back going, so.
Okay.
The way we had a program, it kind of slowed down, so, but that's my focus now, is trying to get those curbing sidewalks going again, so.
Let's try and get some money in the budget to.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Are the majority of our sidewalks handicap accessible, or are all of them?
A lot. When we had the sidewalk program, yes, we did make them handicap accessible, so, with ADA, so.
Anything new that gets replaced is always handicap accessible.
Right, right, so.
Just kind of start keeping a list of areas, but of course, you can't look at it now.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's something that, you know, I wrote a few down, you know, but I mean, there's a lot more area I got to go, but most of them are though, so.
In the spring, get some measurements and stuff, and then we can get some estimates.
See what it costs and stuff.
Yeah, we, you are right. We used to do about $60,000 a year in sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah.
A long time.
How long has that program been discontinued?
Well, we've done some every year, even last year we did some. It's just we haven't done anything to that extreme, but the money ran out, so we had to slow down.
Yeah, the whole, I do the whole blocks. That stopped a long time ago, but I mean, we do do sporadic sometimes, I will, so.
And that might be what we do again this year.
Yeah.
Pick some bad areas and, like, you know, like she was saying, some wheelchair accessibility corners and things like that.
Yeah, we'll pick up on it.
Yeah.
We're still under public comment. Anyone else like to come forward? Public comment going once? Going twice? Okay, public comment's closed. On to old business. Any old business to come for the board? All right, hearing none, we'll get into new business. I had mentioned we, before we take these next two resolutions on the Gray Boy and the Pump House, Greg Berklin is here tonight representing Kim Blicken's staff, and I'm, Greg, would you come forward, please? We do not have a PowerPoint tonight?
No.
No? Okay. Can you give a quick update then before we address these two pieces of business?
Sure. Greg Berklin, Washington, Illinois. The Pump House, as far as our plans for that, we'd like to build, convert that into a small restaurant, and also that would be in the actual Pump House itself, and then the building that's next to them that she was alluding to, the round storage unit, I think, for water, we're also looking at that as far as maybe some type of seating for the restaurant also, so that's kind of what we're looking at. That's a great question. We've, we purchased one lot across, we did purchase one lot across from the, from the...
Centennial Building.
Centennial, yes, for parking.
Right, because my house is second right here by it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm the second house from the Gray Bar.
Okay.
A restroom.
Yes, possibly, yes. Small, quaint, nothing, because it can't hold that. It's very small, so it's going to be just a specialty type of restaurant.
I don't know if that's considered residential or is it purely a district?
That I can't answer.
It's commercial.
Yeah, it's commercial. Because of the use that it's on.
It is commercial, yes. So there was a question asked about your intended use of the water tank.
Yes.
Can you get into that, please?
Yes, the water tank would also be for seating also for the restaurant, possibly for that, because the restaurant itself is very small as far as its size, so we could use that areas also for seating too, and also maybe some special events, so we'll have a multipurpose use.
I know this isn't the zoning board, but do you have plans for landscaping and upgrading the property?
Yes, we don't have designs on plan, but that we will do that for sure. It needs attention, it needs to be redesigned and upkeep definitely.
I've been through about new things and things like that.
No bands, no loud music. We're not going to have anything like that. It's just going to be, just this patrons coming by for, to eat.
And then the Gray Boy site, you want to get?
Sure, but would you like to know anything specific or as far as our intended use for that property?
Why don't you give a broad stroke and then let the, any questions that?
Sure. On the Gray Boy site, we're looking at the block which would be east of the BP Gas Station where the Gold Gray Boy site is now to, where the subway, so that lot we would be putting commercial property on the first floor, and then five living residents on top, and no higher than that, so it'll be a two-story, and then in the center would be a center court that'll allow patrons or people from Prospect Road or even on the other side of the road to travel through that portion over to, actually to truskers here.
You are a fair, we have a kiddie park right across the street for little children. Out of my house, in the house next door to me, there is a kiddie park there.
You're up here?
I don't know about this one. There's one around the corner on you, but, and I'm going to see if you can track me.
I'm sorry. We're talking about Gray Boy, that down the Gray Boys?
No, I'm talking about kiddies.
Oh, so you're switching off? Okay. Okay, no, it's okay. I just want to make sure I'm answering your questions properly. No, I know exactly what, yeah, what you're talking about. Do you have any questions about the Gray Boy? Do you know where the BP Gas Station is?
Yeah.
Okay, do you know where the building right next to it, it's a two-story? That's the Gray Boy location. That was actually a motorcycle shop at one time. So that's where we're proposing to do the commercial development and then the lofts on top.
Okay.
So the Gray Boy, that's in the middle of it, on the lower level, be drive-through?
Not a drive-through, actually a pedestrian walkway. No traffic whatsoever, yeah, so everyone can either have a outside, pick benches outside there, but it'd be a gathering spot also. But it would definitely be a walkway.
And you have those drawings available?
We do have those, and actually, we presented them a while back, but I can get, I can get you a set of drawings, so you can see those, too.
And the, for everyone watching at home and everyone in the audience, the presentation from the announcement is on the Village website. That's about a 45-minute-long presentation if, for anyone who wants to see that?
That's correct. Yes.
Go ahead, trustee record, any other questions?
Um, no, I don't have any.
Okay. Mr. Travers?
I didn't catch any residential units, did you say?
Five. Yes.
Okay.
Did we talk that the parking on that was going to be underground?
We will have parking in back and also underground both.
Okay.
So as far as this lease is concerned, are you going to take possession of that building, then, effective immediately, assuming it passes tonight?
Correct. Yes, we're definitely ready to move forward and start creating revenue and sell stream for taxes.
Okay, so let's tackle this first resolution. It's a request for approval of a purchase contract for 4414 through 4426 North Prospect Road between the Village of Peoria Heights and Kim Blickenstaff. So trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the approval of a purchase contract between Village Peoria Heights and Kim Blickenstaff.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So council, would you take a shot at what we're doing here?
Sure, absolutely. The purchase contract is for, obviously, the Gray Boy site, and these negotiations have happened just really since the holidays, and in my opinion, I would like to actually see a resolution, a formal resolution that approves a contract of this magnitude. We really wanted to get it in front of the board tonight to discuss, talk about terms, make sure everybody was good with it, and then I will prepare a resolution, a formal resolution that approves this. I'm not trying to delay it, but I think this is something that, you know, having it presented at least once for, you know, full discussion, answer questions that anybody has, and then come back with a formal resolution gives everybody plenty of time to digest it. So, you know, it is on the agenda tonight. I think we could go forward with it tonight. I would just prefer to see a resolution, and it wasn't really right for that by the deadline to get that on the agenda of Friday. In fact, I just heard at about 4:30 today from Mr. Blickenstaff's attorney that he had approved changes that I had recommended to this contract, so, I mean, it's been that.
So you don't want us to take any action tonight, then, other than discuss it, is that?
Other than discussion, full discussion tonight, so that everybody can then think about it for a week, and then maybe we come back with a resolution next week.
Next week?
Well, we could wait for the next full village board meeting, if you prefer, or we could do it at, or we could do it at an departmental. That's going to be prerogative of the mayor and board.
I'd say we get on this, get it moving as fast as possible. If we can just go ahead and approve it, and then you come back, and we can overlook, look over your actual resolution, so we, so they can get started on this.
Okay.
Instead of stalling anything.
Just passing it in the form of a res-
I think we ought to wait a week, though.
Yeah.
I know why we can't wait a week.
Does anybody object to the concept of a resolution on next week's departmental?
Well, I just have a question as far as the legalities. Does passing it in the form of resolution confer any sort of additional legal protections, or is that just procedural, simply procedural?
Procedurally, it's more formal, and the reason I like to go that more formal route, this is a significant contract. If this were a, you know, invoice for, you know, a couple thousand dollars for something that we're buying, like some of the other matters on the agenda tonight, a formal resolution is by no means required. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be binding, but I always like to have a separate resolution that the board has approved for, you know, an additional reason. Creates more of a paper trail. We've got something to look back. Yes, this was formally before the board. Everybody took action, you know.
So can we, not to interrupt you, council, but could we make that motion to, tonight, to direct you and staff to prepare a formal resolution for next week?
Yes.
To act on?
That would be an appropriate action item.
Can I get the maker of the motion to adjust that motion?
Do I need to amend it? Is that how this works, or just a completely new motion?
No, just a...
To clarify it?
Yeah, clarify what you're asking for.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion for village council to go ahead and prepare a resolution for the request of approval for a purchase contract between the Village of Peoria Heights and Kim Blickenstaff. Does that suffice?
And to take action next, at the next departmental meeting, is that okay?
Correct, you can.
Okay, is that okay with you, trustee Gett? You may?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, now back to questions. I think there were some...
Yes.
So fire away on the questions.
I'm here to answer any questions.
I have a question. So we paid $350,000 for, we borrowed $600,000. Do we have money left?
No, what that was, was a line of credit, in case we, and I'll give a quick overview on it. I did send that email out to everybody, if you remember. That's a good, will you give the entire backstory on? Okay. First of all, it was a praise for $250,000. We paid $350,000. The loan was for $600,500. That included the cost for demolition, and two years of interest, and also pool of funds for creating a parking lot on the property. That was, that idea was discarded not long after the purchase, if you remember right. The payoff balance of the loan as of today's date is approximately $334,000. So the money was never pulled out as far-
So we never borrowed the whole $600,000?
Exactly, exactly.
What did we borrow?
I'm not sure exactly what we did borrow, but it would have been the interest, but we did not pull out the money for the parking lot or any lighting. I guess the demolition would have been covered in the interest, but as far as exactly that number, I'd have to get it from Stephanie. But the balance of today's date is $334,000 on both lots.
Well, I'm wondering about the statement on here that says loan payment of $43957 due 8/2 of '21. So how do we get $334,183?
I think that's if the loan continues. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So that's with approved interest?
Yes.
And am I mistaken, but on that sheet, was the money, is the money for that coming out of the BDD?
Some of it is.
For that piece of property?
Um, you know, not the-
Does that go back into the BDD, or when we sell this, or does that go into our general fund, or how does that work?
I'd imagine our general fund. I don't think the money goes back into the BDD.
I don't remember paying for that out of the BDD.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know. Is Stephanie, Stephanie's? Stephanie, Stephanie, will you just come up here and sit down over here, please?
Yeah.
Greg, you can, well, we may need you.
Right, right.
Okay, so Chief Sutton is correct. The reason the payoff is $334,000 is because we never borrowed the full pool of funds. Funds that we did borrow were to pay the closing cost for it. I don't recall that we specifically paid any of the demo out of the loan funds. I believe we used BDD for those, but I'd be happy to check and get back to them.
For the loan?
Yes, for the cost. There were two buildings originally. It's 4416 and 4424, I believe, are the two addresses. We demoed one of the buildings and then put in grass to kind of, the worst of the two buildings. BDD funds have been used to pay the entirety of the loan payments that we have been making. I think we've made maybe four or six, possibly eight of them. Not too many actual loan payments have been made because the first two years of interest was wrapped into the total amount of the loan that we borrowed. And then-
So we've been paying more than just interest, we've been actually making loan payments?
We've been making a few loan payments, not too many. Those came out of the BDD fund. Any funds that we receive for this presumably would go towards paying off the loan itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, so any funds that are over above that could go into the BDD, that could go into the general fund as well, I believe.
So none of that money has to go back to the BDD?
I'll have to check with Steve Klein on that, but I don't believe so. And then you had asked about the amount that the lump sum payment that's due at the end of it, that it notes about. The reason that's so high is because they were assuming we were going to borrow the full $605,000. So presumably, if we had carried out through the life of this loan, that would have been reduced by the funds we didn't borrow. Also, I know the intent was that we would refinance that loan after a couple of years at a better interest rate.
Thanks for the clarification.
What is the interest rate?
Is the interest rate listed on that sheet by chance? I don't know it off the top of my head.
No.
I'll get it for you.
I want to say that one was 5%, roughly.
High.
High for a municipal loan.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Okay, so then another question that I had about this at the closing on this, council, was that, I think they listed a realtor in here, correct, and they're going to pay the commission out of their own pocket, and it won't be coming out of our profit?
That's exactly right. The buyer is undertaking all of the real estate commission.
And then we're going to split closing costs 50/50, is that what I read in here?
That is exactly right, yes.
How much is closing?
Title insurance will probably be between $2,000 and $3,000. That's customarily provided by the seller. There's no real estate taxes to prorate. There'd be a small closing fee. This purchase price is more than going to cover that payoff on the loan.
Yeah, yeah.
So there probably will be, not a lot, we're not going to fund anything major with, but there will, should be a little bit left over with, of the purchase funds. So we will need to contact Steve Klein and find out if that goes into the BDD fund or the village general fund.
So just so everyone at home and in the audience knows that we did advertise for proposals on this parcel, and I believe it was a 30-day window. This was the only offer that we received, and it, I think it's an outstanding offer, but there were no other interested parties. Is that correct, Mr. Walton?
As far as I know, that's, that's correct. It was only Mr. Blickenstaff. And this, I think is actually the second time we've advertised for proposals.
Yes.
Just to be clear.
That is right. And then there was another developer that did have the opportunity to develop that parcel, but the time window closed out on that, before you came around.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay.
And my other question is, the amendments that you're going to be making to this, or that you have submitted, those are everything in here that's been crossed out, or?
Right, anything.
Or the italicized?
Crossed out or underlined, correct. Crossed out is coming out, and the underlined is staying in. And I just heard from the attorney at about 4:30 today that they had accepted all of those changes.
Okay, and they didn't add anything, or anything taken out?
Okay, so closing would be 60 days from supposedly, assuming everything goes okay, from next week?
From next week, correct.
Perfect.
That's a standard timeline for a commercial transaction, so.
Time for spring.
Anyone else? I just want to say that I, Kim Blickenstaff and his team have been really great to work with. Remind everyone they're not using any, it's in a TIF district, they're not using any TIF funds, they're not asking for any incentives at all from the village. They're paying $100,000 over the appraisal of this property, and they're going to do a nice development there that's going to go on the tax rolls and begin paying property tax, so we'll gain a lot of, we'll gain a lot of sales tax off the property and a lot of real estate, property tax as well, so.
Okay, so then I have a question about that. If, does that building not sit in within the TIF district that we have over there?
It does.
So they could, can they ask for TIF money if they, I mean, do they, they don't have to ask for it upfront, right, but they can later if they want to?
Sure, sure. But once they've purchased it, you know, it would be up to the, totally up to the village. Typically, developers want all of that stuff front-loaded on the front end before they get involved.
Right, but they could come back if they want to?
Certainly.
Okay.
Mr. Berklin, you're the spokesperson for Mr. Blickenstaff, correct?
Correct.
Do you expect to do that in the future?
No.
So then how does that work with the, doesn't the school district get like a percentage of that TIF money, and so then there would be nothing involved with this?
Right, so 100% of the tax increment, usually 50, 75, sometimes higher, goes to the developer or for infrastructure.
Correct.
In this case, 100% of that goes into the TIF fund, and the portion that we split with the school district, 100% of that portion goes to the school district.
Okay.
So this is, we're far more money coming to the village and then in turn being shared with the school district than with any other TIF project that we would otherwise do.
Great, okay, thank you.
So it's very, very win-win for the village, all the way around.
Since the school district gets the largest share of the property tax, they get, they'll get a big share of this.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good, good questions. Anyone else? Okay, so we are going to call the roll on accepting this offer and directing staff and council to prepare a formal resolution for final action at next Tuesday's departmental meeting. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you. Next, we have the request for approval of a long-term lease for 1203 East Kingman between the Village of Peoria Heights and Kim Blickenstaff. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this?
I'd just like to preface that, are we okay to move forward on this, then, council, or how do we want to handle this?
I recommend the exact same approach with this as well.
Okay. So how would you frame that motion, just to make sure that everything's encapsulated?
Absolutely. A motion to direct the village attorney to prepare a formal resolution approving the lease agreement for the next departmental meeting.
Can I accept that language as is right now?
You sure can.
All right, that's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, council, will you set this up, please?
Absolutely. So this was, this property, the Pump House property that we have talked about tonight, also in the TIF district. We also advertised for proposals for use of the property, received nothing except for Mr. Blickenstaff's. This one, I think the village decided, at least the administration decided, the historic significance of the property dictated that we would be more comfortable leasing the property rather than selling. Am I accurate with that?
No, that's exactly true. So when Kim came into town several times over the summer, he loved the heights and wanted to invest in more than just one property other than the Gray Boy. And we showed him the Pump House, and he wanted to buy it, but I felt there was historical significance behind that building, and it's adjacent to our park, and I thought a lease would be more in line with what the, to protect the village interests. So he was perfectly okay with that, and we'll, I think this lease will protect Kim and his investment, but also if the village ever decides it doesn't work out, that we'll have a way to exit out of that. But we were not using the Pump House for any useful purpose other than to hold the controls for the water system, and we have moved those controls elsewhere. There's, the Pump House is not being used for anything, so now we will not only put this on the property tax rolls, we'll be gaining income every month in the form of rent, so.
Correct. So just walking through just the basics of the lease, it's got an initial term of 10 years. The tenant then has four, five-year options to extend the term, so that would lead to a total potential term of 30 years. The rent for the first 10 years is going to be $30,000 per year. That's payable, and monthly installments are $2,500. And then there's a rent escalator for all of the four option periods of 5% each option. So first option would be $31,500 a year, and so on down the line. The construction, because obviously it's going to take some, some construction on the part of the tenant, and there's a provision for improvements on page five and section 11, but effectively the village has to approve anything, any kind of work that gets done there. And we have no reason to suspect that that's not going to be a cooperative win-win, you know, relationship with Mr. Blickenstaff. The one thing that was brought up tonight that made me think, something that is not addressed specifically in the lease, that we might want to consider addressing, and that is limitations on the use. You know, I've heard that it's going to be a restaurant. I think that's been the plan all along.
Correct.
The village might, the board might want to, especially in light of some of the comments tonight, have a clause in the lease that says the initial use is going to be for restaurant purposes. There won't be bands or live music or other loud music that might disrupt the neighborhood surrounding. And then that any change in that use would require village board consent and approval before the change is effected.
I think-
That might be an appropriate clause for the lease. I don't expect any problems in that regard, but have it in writing.
I agree.
Agree as well?
Yeah, when you're going to put, you know, put something like that in a residential area, just like this lady here said, I apologize, I don't remember your name, I would agree. You know, I would definitely agree if I was going to have a restaurant, you know, where I lived. I think we should have that in there just to protect the residents in that area.
I think a band might be excessive, but like a, a single person with a guitar, I mean, a lot of times you'll see that in a restaurant, you know, just like a solo artist or something. I mean, you've got to allow for some things, but, yeah.
I'll come up with appropriate language that limits it just to anything, you know, we, what we don't want is disruptive to the surrounding.
Exactly.
As long as it's not, you know, audible, you know, in the surrounding. We've, I've got language, we've done that before in leases, so.
Yeah, we've had police on- Yeah, we've had police officers standing in neighborhoods with the little, I don't know what you call that, Dustin, it measures sound.
We discussed a meter, but I was against that, so you're right. But we do have a, we do have a nuisance ordinance covering loud music and stuff like that, so.
Again, I don't anticipate any problems, but I'll, I'll come up with appropriate language on that.
Okay. Greg, one of the, one of the things I know that I've, I've felt for a while that that old tank is somewhat of an eyesore, what are your plans for the exterior of that tank?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We will, I, we're working with Farnsworth, which is also an architect firm, and also Craig Miller out of Bozeman, Montana, who's an architect too. And the outside of it will be definitely dressed up, I just don't know what their invi, their vision is, but it's, we're here to, to increase the quality of life in Peoria Heights, and we're going to do what's necessary to please you and our neighbors. Believe me, I mean, if, if you're not happy with us, you know, that's not what we want. We want to be good neighbors, so as soon as I have some, some better definition as far as what they would look like, I can definitely present that to the board and they can actually get that to you, or we're actually having websites being built as we speak, and those websites will be obviously public, and you can build, view those and see that, and there's a comment page, you can get back to us and give us some feedback.
I have a neighbor next door to me who is getting elderly and she has a potential problem, and then I'm right next to her, but I'm more concerned about that child park over there, and it's been there for many years.
What would your concern be?
Traffic.
Okay.
Yeah, cars coming around corners, because they fly through there now if anybody around that curve, you know.
Sure.
But I've lived there for 55 years, you know, and the park's been there, and it's been great, and it's been, they're little children now, not, not teenagers.
Correct.
It's a small, for children's park. So there's a lot of families that, that walk through the high street and come across here, because I've seen them, and I'm like, wow.
Sure.
And then I'm, and then I'm asking you this, is, if that's commercial property, then what is my property two doors down? Is that commercial or is that residential?
Yours is residential, ma'am.
Because it will be long before I may be silent, and leaving here, and I want to know what it's going to do to my property down here.
Oh, sure.
Unless you want to help me with that.
Get ahold of Chief Sutton, and he'll get ahold of me.
Well, no.
You know, that's definitely, you know.
Kim has purchased a property right in the same neighborhood on Claridan and Euclid?
Yes, actually, he's in your neighborhood too, I mean, and my daughter's living there now, so, I mean, I have her. On Claridan?
No, I know where you're at, I'm just saying that's where my daughter's at right now.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions? You ready to vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gutt?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Carter? I'm sorry, Riker.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Next, we'd be at request for approval for payments to Mike Bailey through BDD funds in the amount of $3,000. Trustee Dan Mariscal, thank you, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for payment to Mike Bailey in the amount of $3,000 through BDD funds. And do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay. Dustin, would you explain what we're doing here?
Frank, going back probably a couple months when all of you took a tour of the old library, the Performing Arts Center you introduced to Mike Bailey, who's handling all of the PR and the marketing between the village and Kim Blickenstaff's team and, and also the media, so that's, that's what he's been doing for us. That money does come out of BDD funds. I think everybody here is aware of who Mike Bailey is, so very pleased with the work he's done. He's done a great job of facilitating all the communication between all the parties, so.
Did they move on this as well, the BDD board?
No, they did not.
I don't understand. They don't have to.
I noticed because we got their minutes from, for the first time, and I was reading through there, so that's why I asked, because they were voting on something and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I think, I think when it comes to that, they do, but I'm not sure that as far as the marketing aspect, that that, that is the case. Isn't that the correct, Stephanie?
Typically, we have not taken the loan payments to them, the professional services, the administrative stuff that we do through the BDD, we have not taken to them more of like the public beautification dollars of what we've taken to them.
Right, and that, and the, the Graaway project, which is, you know, Prospect and Lake, that is, that is something that, that was taken, brought to them and to the board, but not, the, not this.
Not this.
You know, I think it's a good question, though, that maybe we at least want to let them know when we, they have the BDD meetings, what we're doing, and get their input on it.
Yes, typically it's presented to them in their finance reports.
Right.
So they do receive a report, and it details every check, and we talk about it.
Yeah, they're given all that information, and they just had a meeting, and there, there was no question regarding any of the, any of the money, so that is a good question, though.
So is this our first time contracting with this individual?
Yes, it's not the first bill, Trustee Mariscal, but it's the first time we brought him in during the Blickenstaff development.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and I just, I want to say too that we have a series of announcements we'll be rolling out in the future. There's more exciting news that's happening in the heights, and we want to make sure that we do a good job of communicating with our citizens and do a good job of communicating with the board. That's part, part of Mike's role, and he also, I would say, we've got two front-page stories on the Journal Star, one on the, one on this announcement, and then one on Kim on a Sunday the following week, we were on TV, so I think he really got us out there in the, in the public eye, and we do spend some money on marketing to try to get noticed, but I think this is all free publicity that, that he got us, and I think he's done a, he's done a really good job, so.
Not to mention the magazine articles that'll be coming.
Uh, inter-business issues, I think we got a cover on that.
Correct.
So, coming out, so. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gutt?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. That passes. Next is a request for approval for payment to Berkler Truck Sales Incorporated in the amount of $6,138.07 for Public Works Truck Emergency expenditure. Trustee Hart, I'd ask for motion to approve this.
I make a motion, we approve this.
Do I have a second? I do, okay, go ahead, Trustee Hart.
Okay, uh, our acting superintendent, one of them, Mike Casey, took one of our, they noticed a power steering leak in one of our dump trucks, and they took it down to Berkler to be fixed, and it, it just sort of led one problem into another. The, kind of the whole front end needed rebuilt with, I'm looking at the parts list and tie rods and kingpins, and the brakes were shot, and so to make the truck safe to plow snow, we just sort of ended up here, so, but it'll make a, a solid truck out of it again for a while, so I make a motion, we approve spending the 61, or paying the bill for 61.38.
Okay, we, we had that in a second. Anything you want to add, Mike?
No, that vehicle is our backup truck, and we actually use it, not this last one from the snowstorm before, when our new truck went down, so we didn't have to spend as many. This is one we kept, an old truck, and it's been around for a while, but it's a best old truck, and like Brian said, one thing led to another, the brakes and this, so that's basically, when he's telling me, I'm like, gee, I mean, Chris, you're rebuilding the whole thing. But we need it, it's important to us, and we got a truck to go down, we put that right in, right out of bounds, so it's a good truck. So that's, I'm sorry it happened that way, but that's, you know.
This, this is equivalent to what happened to the, the fire department a couple months ago, they had an emergency repair that needed repaired right away, and obviously you needed this, the snowstorm, so I'm glad we did it.
Okay, any questions for Trustee Hart or Mr. Casey? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gutt?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Next is a request for approval of a run to Remember on Saturday, May 4th, 2019. Trustee Mariscal, could I have a motion to approve this?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the approval for the Run to Remember on Saturday, May 4th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, go ahead, Dan.
I don't believe this warrants any further explanation.
I'll explain.
So that'll be all that I've got, thank you.
So we, we have a, you have a, I'm sorry, I was talking to Trustee. Run to Remember, yes, this is an annual race that they do every year, we're, we're aware of the, the route, and we'll be prepared, so I don't foresee any issue.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gutt?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Can I ask a question before I, oh, is it too late? My question on that is, does that fall on that Mother's Day by any chance, like when the?
It's always the day before Mother's Day, I think. Oh, no, it's the weekend before.
When the Susan G. Coleman, is it, does it coincide with the Susan G. Coleman thing?
That's the next weekend.
That's the following?
This one's always the weekend.
Okay, okay.
I was just wondering, can this fall out for school?
Okay, okay.
Aye.
And Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is a request for approval of Super Shuffle 5K on February 3rd, 2019. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for motion to approve that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Super Shuffle 5K on February 3rd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Looks like this race is slated to start at 10:30, and it looks like they want to set up at 8:30, and it will conclude by 11:30.
Correct, yep, we have talked to them, and we're good to go with the route.
All right, questions?
Do they have some kind of a contingency date if there's a snowstorm that day?
I mean, it is February 3rd.
Are you here with that group? Would you come forward and answer that que, and tell us who you are and answer that question, please?
Where's Snowshoes?
Hello, I'm Audrey Williams with the American Cancer Society. It is a, as long as it's not lightning, we are going to run the race. We've let our racers know that it could be more interesting if there's a foot of snow on the ground, but it will happen, rain, snow, sleet or hail.
Thank you, and we're excited to have you here. You're moving this from?
This is our first-time event, but a couple months ago, you approved the Peoria County Night of Hope to move here, and so we're excited to have more events here in the heights.
Great. Aubrey, you did, also met with, or spoke to Kevin Shields regarding parking and everything regarding that, and got that worked out?
Yep, we're approved with Heritage Square, they have our certificate of insurance, so we're set there.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Do you have an idea for how many runners you're going to have?
Right now, we have 53, we could use a lot more, but it's our first-time event, so, you know, we're not sure. If we got to 100, I'd be very happy, so we'll see.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gutt?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
All right, that passes, and then the last bit of new business is a request for approval of installation of LED streetlight fixtures on Prospect, not to exceed $20,000. Trustee Hart, I'd ask for motion to approve that.
I make a motion, we approve the LED streetlights.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
Okay, Laser Electric will be doing the work. They're going to remove and replace the existing HPS streetlight fixtures on Prospect Road from Glen Avenue South to Lake Street, excluding the Lake Street intersection with new LED fixtures. They're going to dispose of the old fixtures and put the new ones in. Their estimate is $18,008.72, but we just said we'll not exceed 20,000, because you always run into little things, so that way we're not coming back and changing it in the end.
Does that replace all of them?
Just from Glen to Lake.
All of them?
All of them.
That's a lot of them.
Yeah, yeah, it's quite a few.
Like 31 or 32 lights.
They'll, they'll use less electricity and be brighter, and Mike was.
32.
Anything to add, Mike?
No, it's just that the money that I was spending, calling them out, the 60 of the lights, it's just anywhere between $1.50 to $400, you know, for to come out and just fix one, so it's long-term saving for ammunition and the re-crea, whatever, and, you know, that way I have to save. I just keep calling them, yeah, but we can't do it, because we're not electricians, we do valves, and one thing needs the other, they're always like, you should just put them, oh, you do that there, oh, yeah. You give it, they're like $400 apiece, you know, so.
So are they going to look different?
Though, there's like a test one there at Cyroline and Prospect on the southwest corner that they put up a long time ago, is similar, similar to that, but if you've ever been across from the Cloughbridge Bridge, I know they were way up, they're like those, sort of like Ammunition's putting out, they got it from, same, same thing from them. I don't know if you've seen the new streetlights, I call that or not, but I can't remember any places, but there's a test one down there.
So we would have to, I would think we'd have to replace light bulbs less often with these.
Yeah, yeah, that would be like nine, we probably would have to do that for ever. You know, I mean, 10, 15 years, that'd be maybe longer, so. I know before, like if it was five years, if one would go out, they'd do it for free, replace it, so, but it's, in the long run, you're taking a lot of money. And, and I keep pushing Ammunition, but every time I call in a streetlight now, like, say, is your neighborhood, or they put those in. A lot of people, like, they're so private, but they do put those in.
So when we call them because we have a streetlight out, does, do they charge us for doing that?
No, no, no.
Okay, and is this in our budget?
Yes. We got money from the BDD, and then plus I have money that we had in our budget, so.
Plus, Mike said that there's a couple that need attention right now that need to be worked on, and he just thought, you know, we're going to put in the new ones anyway, we'll just let it sit, so, here we go.
I have a couple, couple, straight three that I'm, I mean, now, instead of paying $400 or $300, you know, a thousand dollars just to fix that three, probably. Heights always let, you know, yeah, they're bright enough, the Heights do, so.
Well, since the BDD's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, we are really fortunate to have business doing well in Peoria Heights, and I know in the BDD, Treffskers and Shermans